I'm going to clear this meeting order again. I apologize to all of you for running a little late. We were in a meeting discussing litigation and we had a, we just had a few too many lawyers in the room.
There were only two.
There were three.
There were four at one time.
So I think now that everybody understands what took place there, we do appreciate your tolerance. We thought that would be about a half hour and it did, it did take a little longer. With that, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have some special guests with us today. We're especially grateful to have the Lackey family here with us and Bob Bryant, who has, we've been working with closely as Mr. Lackey's attorney. What we hope to do is to roll up our sleeves this morning and really go through these documents that are plowing new ground, if you will, for the city and certainly for the Lackey family and get you all comfortable with all your questions out of basically a year's worth of work as we've been having conference calls and working this over. I think what would be the most productive way to get that started is to just ask Deputy City Attorney Ms. Dula to go ahead and start walking through the timeframe, but to keep it informal so that Mr. Bryant, Mr. Lackey, others can chime in as we go through because this has definitely been a joint effort of all of us working together for several months. Is everybody comfortable with that? Are we good with that? No?
There's a plan.
There's a plan? Okay, never mind. Forget everything I just said.
They've already worked it out.
There's a plan.
You're farcical.
Okay, I'll just turn the time over to Ms. Dula. Is it, can I do that much?
You can do that much.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members and Mr. Berry and, I think we lost Mr. Crone somewhere. I guess he's still back in the other room. Actually, this part, I'm going to turn this part over to Mr. Lackey and for him to make some introductory remarks and introduce people and also his attorney, Mr. Robert Bryant. Bob Bryant is here with us and others. So take your leave.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members and Mr. Berry, of course. I always get nervous when we talk about litigation and then introduce me. That's why I have my attorney with me. We had a great Father's Day weekend and hope you did and I can tell by the suntans who all was out playing golf and fishing versus us guys that were home working on it. Nonetheless, we're grateful to be here again today to talk again about our park and just to thank all of the folks that have worked really, really hard on these contracts and agreements and there's jillions of them. I don't know how many we can go through today, but we do appreciate our Nita especially and Mick and his office and his staff for working diligently to help us navigate through brand-new territory, places we have never been for sure. And our attorney, Bob Bryant, is here from Charlotte Robinson Bradshaw and has worked diligently with these folks too. Of course, Karen Waddell, who is our project manager for the park. And of course, my son, Rob, who was one of those that fished all last year in the bonds. But anyway, we're happy, excited to be at this phase of the project and we hope that any questions you have, we can answer today. Thank you again.
Okay. As we get started, I'll say this is again going to be a free-flowing discussion. What I contemplate doing is going over the particular agreements section by section and of course, I encourage you to ask questions as we are in each section and not reserve them to the end. We've heard presentations before by Mr. Lackey sharing his vision for the park and today we get to go a little bit into the weeds, so to speak, on how that actually is going to occur. It's one thing to have a vision, it's another thing to bring that vision to fruition and to pass. So today, we're going to start, first of all, with the grant construction easement agreement. If you will turn to that, because the agreement itself is not up there. This is just giving us a framework for going over the agreements. Now, this slide does summarize pretty much the background statement that the purpose of this agreement is to govern the construction and development of the memorial park, waterfront memorial park to memorialize the late Dedra Lackey. And the park will consist of what we'll call the gardens, which consists of structures and landscapes.
That's my first question. That's, you know, I call, I call, I can't, I can't find anything that shows where the gardens are or what the gardens are.
Okay.
I know generally speaking or...
I don't think I can do this, this is not PowerPoint. Does that help? Does this one help?
Okay, so, and that's the, that's under master plan?
Yes.
Okay, so, does this mean that when we see gardens, it would be all these zones A, C, A, B, C, D?
Yeah, the zones actually will consist of Phase One and the order in which the projects, the particular facilities or structure is going to be built, that's going to be determined by what's on the ground and when the site is prepared. As we go through, you'll see a little bit of information or provisions regarding site preparations and things we have to do to make a determination.
I mean, like, are the boat docks part of the gardens?
No, and I'm going to get to that in just a second. Let me, in fact, let me go ahead and tell you what the gardens are, if you will. Well, is that not actually in this agreement? It's in the conservancy agreement. But the boat docks are not a part of the gardens. If you'll give me just a second, I'll go to the other agreement and give you those definitions. Okay, the gardens will consist of the following facilities and features. There will be a memorial garden, the conservatory, which you can see here. The memorial garden is, will be the area basically around here, around the conservatory. The lake house, there will be a canopy walk, the event dock, and of course, parking for the facilities, parking here, here, here. The other facilities such as the, what we're going to turn into, the restrooms, bikeway, group picnic shelter, outdoor restroom, fishing dock, boat ramp, boat dock, which there have been some changes in that. I think that's going to be more like a kayak launch or canoe launch, I think. Those facilities are not part of the gardens, the official gardens, but the facilities specifically named at the beginning, here, 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 here.
And what's the difference between the two then?
Okay.
Being a part or not being a part?
Okay, well, I actually need to get into the agreements a little bit. Part of it deals with how, who will be responsible for operating and managing the facilities and that's delineated further. Actually, again, more so in the conservancy agreement, these facilities, as you'll see and we'll get more into detail, the conservancy, the dock, lake house, the canopy walk, those facilities are going to be operated and managed by the conservancy group, which we'll discuss a little bit further in further detail. The other remaining amenities, the bathrooms, group picnic shelter, parking, entrance way, the ramp, the fishing dock, et cetera, will be managed and operated by the city. Now, those provisions, again, this, this particular agreement that we're going over right now deals solely with the construction. It doesn't really delve into the operations and maintenance of those facilities. And I know it's hard because all of, of course, all of them are intertwined and intermingled. Okay, so are we clear so far? Any other additional questions about the delineation?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, yeah, I mean, so gardens is a defined term in the construction agreement.
And it's defined in the definitions under the conservancy.
Under the conservancy agreement.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think there should be, for the benefit of both parties, an exhibit that says this is the gardens, that shows the gardens.
There will be. That's the other, that's the other caveat. There are references to exhibits. The exhibits are being prepared. We do not have those today.
Okay.
So you will see references to exhibits that will include those particular items. We just don't have those yet.
So these are not intended to be the exhibits to the agreement?
No, this is just, this, I brought this today, put this up to give you an idea. This, of course, is the conceptual plan that you have seen on previous occasions, but no, this is not the official master plan slash site plan, no. Any comments?
I think it might be useful to state and let them understand, the conservancy agreement is really the core agreement here that governs the whole contract relationship. When we set the conservancy up, we have to apply for its access and status, 501(c)(3) and that takes a while. So we need to separate out the construction from the conservancy agreement itself because we don't want to take the risk of running that money through the conservancy and then have to be some question about whether it's tax deductible. So what this grant law agreement we're talking about does is separates out the construction phase and gives a vehicle for Rob Lackey to directly provide the money that's required to construct the first phase of the project. And it's from all we're talking about.
It's Phase One.
And disagree. When we get into the conservancy agreement, you'll see a lot of provisions and talk about the water relationship and this really supplements the conservancy agreement and handles only the actual construction of the Phase One facility.
Yes, thank you. Any questions again before we delve a little bit more into the grant agreement? Okay, and thank you, I should have prefaced it by saying yes. The project is being done in Phase. Phase One consists of these particular facilities. Phase One, the grant construction agreement again will be between Mr. Lackey and the city for the construction of the initial facilities, which are part of Phase One. If you'll move to the second page, and this language can be found in the first full paragraph, the city and conservancy agree that the development of the gardens will proceed in phases. And this particular phase is Phase One that specifically this agreement applies to the Phase One. As Mr. Bryant has pointed out, there will be additional facilities hopefully down the line and those will require additional or other grant agreements for the construction of those facilities, but this one specifically relates solely to Phase One. Moving into Article One, just a slide to show you the breakdown of the agreement. Article One, availability of the property. Articles Two and Three dealing with the obligations of both parties. Article Four dealing with the ownership of the facilities, the improvements that are being made. Of course, bonds and insurance under Article Five and miscellaneous provisions in Article Six. Well, too far. Wanted to delve into Article One. Now, I don't plan to read every line word for word. You've hopefully had an opportunity. I'm going to pick out particular provisions I think are key or critical, but of course, if you have questions on any provision in any section, please feel free to ask or if you'd like me to focus on those. I'd like to look at 1.4, under availability of lands. Of course, this particular section warrants that the city owns the property, owns the land upon which the structures are going to be built. The construction will occur via a temporary construction easement to allow Mr. Lackey, who will be our develop, the developer of the project, access, his contractors and subcontractors access to the land, to the property. And we're looking at approximately in the Phase One, including the buffer and expanded area, 25-plus acres or so, give or take. Of course, again, the grant and construction easement, it is temporary and will expire upon completion of the facilities. Moving on to page three. The city, of course, will be required to give information regarding any particular hazardous conditions, any conditions related to right-of-way parcels or easements, which I think there won't be any as far as I know because we own all of that particular property, the Roderick Geithner Park. The developer, of course, will be responsible for any damage occurring outside of the easement, the construction area. And the parties will jointly conduct test borings on the site to determine the conditions of the soil and the existence of rock and any other known environmental issues. That's in 1.7. Of course, any existing hazardous conditions would not be the responsibility of the developer since they are existing. Okay, so Article One, again, deals with availability of the property, basically stating that the city owns the property, has the authority to grant this construction easement to the developer, Mr. Lackey, to construct the facilities in Phase One. Any questions about Article One?
Okay.
All right. Article Two moves into the obligations of the developer, Mr. Lackey. The project, Phase One, will be developed by Mr. Lackey at the developer's own cost and expense and two, stated in 2.1. The developer, of course, will be responsible for engaging the services of the contractor and subcontractor and will actually perform the construction under the direction of the developer. Who determines what is considered a substantial change or modification to the plan? Uh, where are you? Those plans will be submitted to the city as far as the site plan, if there are major reductions, it will go, major amendments, it will go through the normal channels. Of course, the review is conducted by staff, including, of course, our planning director, our Parks and Recreation Director, Mac. Chuck will take a look. Just for any other construction project that occurs on city property, it will go through the normal approval process for the site plan. And thus, any amendments, of course, would be reviewed by, by staff as well.
I think the one thing that might be useful, we're not trying to carve out anything here that's out of the law. So all we're going to talk about is the kind of minor changes that you would expect in any construction project.
2.3, I think, is an important provision we need to look at. If the actual projected cost of the construction exceeds the agreed-upon project cost, which will be defined by the parties and agreed upon, if that cost exceeds 10% as a result of soil or water conditions, then three things can happen. The developer may can, may discontinue construction of the project until a resolution is reached, a mutual resolution by the parties. And that way, a solution may include one of three things, either discontinuing the project, reducing the project scope, changing design, four things, or using additional funds provided by either the conservancy, a third party, or the city to cover the excess costs of the project. Now, discussions, hopefully primarily, any additional funds would be provided by the conservancy or third party. The city's contributions, because this is a, a private, public-private partnership in a sense, the city, however, is not investing significant funds in the project. If there was a significant investment by the city, then we believe that would have triggered the bidding requirements. This project, if you think of it in the sense of a, we'll just use a sculpture, say your artwork, someone has designed and crafted a sculpture and they brought it to the city and here, I'm donating it. The only difference is the donation, the facilities are actually being constructed on the site because, of course, you couldn't construct buildings and move them here. But if you think of it in that sense, therefore, again, the city's contributions, that would have to be carefully monitored if the city were asked to, to pay or cover the excess costs. And then, again, that's predicated on finding or hopefully not finding soil or water conditions that would require the project to exceed the project cost.
I think it's worth pointing out that this is actually a very limited right.
Yes.
Because the way that we contemplate this to work and the way the agreement provides is we go out there and do test borings and we try to determine what the underground conditions are and we list them in Exhibit B. So we start off with any knowledge that come out of the test borings and we know what the existing regulations are. And all this really protects us from are completely unforeseen things. If there's some major problem out there that didn't show up in the test borings or if there's some change in the regulations that dramatically increase our costs, it simply says we got to stop and take a step back.
Right.
Talk about it and figure out what to do. It doesn't impose any obligation on the city.
No.
It simply says, we don't have to write a blank check that says that if things change dramatically from what we expected, we're still going to build this. We stop and we talk about it and figure out how to go forward. That's what we're starting.
Yes, um, again, but setting out that particular option should the, should that situation arise. But as Mr. Bryant pointed out, hopefully with the test borings, the soil borings, those kind of issues will be determined in advance. Now, of course, the developer will be responsible for obtaining the necessary permits and other licenses necessary to construct the project. The developer will monitor the contractor and subcontractor's compliance with all the laws, applicable laws and regulations. There, again, is a reference to Exhibit B, which will include not only the, the results from the soil borings, but also a warranty statement that there are no existing hazardous materials on the property. 2.8 and 2.9 deal with keeping the site, of course, and 2.10, safe and clean, keeping equipment stored in a proper location on the site and, of course, securing the site to prevent damage not only to property but to persons. And of course, once the construction begins, well, even prior to that, the park will have to be closed and will remain closed to the public with access only being granted to the developer, the developer's contractors and subcontractors and, of course, city staff.
And the area that we're talking about will be defined under Exhibit A, which is yet to develop.
Yes.
As to what will be closed.
Right. The master plan.
The master plan.
Yes, which will be the actual site plan. And of course, that, that will be developed and go through the normal channels for approval. Any questions on that particular article, Article Two? Site preparation, rough grading will be, of course, the responsibility of the developer. Any questions about the developer's obligations as far as construction? All right, Article Three deals with, of course, the city's obligations. Now, the city has the right to oversee the work but is not obligated because of the developer. It is the developer's project. The developer is, of course, constructing facilities on city property. Now, the regular approvals as far as zoning, that type of thing, of course, still fall under the purview of the city. If, if the city determined that the contractor was doing something that created a safety hazard, then, of course, the city could issue a stop work order. So those normal processes and requirements are still in place for this project. 3.2 is critical since, of course, this involves construction of boating and fishing facilities that are included in the park. The city will assist the developer in obtaining necessary permits and approvals from Duke Energy. Of course, the city has, has contacts and other information that it will provide, the city will provide to the developer to help facilitate the process of gaining, or obtaining the necessary approvals. 3.3, with the exception of 2.3, again, the limited reference to the city perhaps contributing something if the project costs exceeded the agreed-upon project costs by 10%. With that exception, the city will not be obligated to pay any portion of the cost of the project. 3.4 is significant. Of course, the city will provide written contemporaneous documents of any gifts to the city, of course, for, for tax, for charitable contributions. And this will be provided to the developer, of course, on the forms provided by him. Article Three, any questions about those provisions? The city's obligations, again, solely in regard to the construction of facilities.
The removal of the existing structure?
That will be done by the developer. And there's a provision in here a little bit later, I think, and that deals with, and that may be in the other agreement. There will be an option to either keep and renovate the existing facilities such as the group picnic shelter and the bathrooms, or the developer may choose to demolish those facilities and construct new ones.
But that's actually in the conservancy agreement. That would be handled in a different grant law agreement.
Okay.
We decided to do that. But the notion there is we're trying to create a very cooperative relationship with the city that's flexible and we're taking on this core obligation to build the things we're talking about now. And then we need to sort of jointly figure out what makes the most sense of the surrounding facilities. And that's the one set up in the conservancy.
Again, ownership of the facilities under Article Four, the city retains ownership and fee simple, of course, of the land and as the facilities that were referenced in Phase One, as the facilities and actually in any future phases, the facility, the city will own the facilities as they are being constructed. 4.2 gives the developer the right to place personal property, which would include artwork, furniture, other such furnishings in the facilities and also to remove those items as necessary, anything that's not, of course, permanently affixed to the structure. You'll also see later on in the conservancy agreement that the conservancy itself will have the same right to place personal property in the facilities. And there will be an opportunity for the city also to place things, some things with the approval, for example, some piece of artwork. But that will be done, of course, again, in conjunction with the conservancy and with its approval of those items. Any question about the ownership? Again, we own the property, we will own the buildings as they are being constructed. Article Five, dealing with bonds and insurance. The developer will take out or submit performance and payment bonds for the project in accordance with General Statute 44A-26. The bonds, of course, will be in an amount at least equal to the anticipated total cost of the project and will remain in effect, again, just like any other construction that is occurring. Under 5.2, the developer will maintain, will purchase and maintain insurance during the construction of facilities, including, of course... construction of facilities, including, of course, general and commercial liability insurance and any other insurance that is appropriate for the project. The remainder of 5.2, 0.1 goes into the things that will be covered under the insurance, any claims related to workers comp, injury to personnel, personal injury, other damages, Also, property insurance and the full replacement costs will be purchased by the developer and maintained through the construction. The other provisions go more into detail about the form that that insurance has to take. If you'll turn to the next page. 5.2.3, the required insurance, commercial liability, general liability shall include the city as an additional sure, and will also cover public officials, employees, staff, anyone associated with the city will be added as well and will have, will be afforded The city is not required to purchase and maintain property insurance to protect the developer's interests, however, or the contractors and subcontractors. So any such risk of loss will be borne by the developer. And again, this is for the construction, during the construction phase of those facilities. Any questions about the insurance requirements? Indemnification, 5.3.2, and this has been stated previously, the developer shall be absolutely liable for any damage or injury to persons or property caused by the construction or renovation of facilities. And the developer, on the next page, will indemnify and hold harmless the city, its officers, agents, employees for any claims that arise as a result of the construction. Questions about Article 5? Article 6, miscellaneous provisions. Of course, this language is pretty much standard in many agreements. Venue, of course, the agreement is governed by the laws of North Carolina and any venue for, venue for any legal proceedings would be, of course, in the Katama County Courts. And these obligations and conditions run with the land. Now, the word easements is in there, the construction easement, however, is temporary. But should there be any other type of easements that would need to be granted, those may be more of a, of a permanent nature. But the construction easement is for solely the construction that, of course, ends or terminates upon completion of the facilities. Any questions about the grant construction easement agreement before we move on? The next agreement we're actually going to go to is the burial site agreement. And again, as Mr. Bryant has pointed out, the conservancy agreement, in a sense, is more so the driver, but because it is in more detail, I wanted to go over the first two agreement, or these other two agreements first. And of course, as we go into the conservancy agreement, if you have questions that relate back to these two, we can address those and go back to them. The next agreement again is the burial agreement, if you'll pull that up. Again, in this agreement, you will see references to exhibits. And those exhibits are not attached at this time, but will be, of course, developed, drafted, and at the proper time, those exhibits and agreements, of course, will be brought to you for your review and consideration for approval. The background statement, basically similar to what was stated in the grant construction easement, that this is a project, again, to memorialize Mrs. Lackey. Specifically, to memorialize her, the city will make space available to the company. And I need to preface that by saying, and Mr. Bryant, correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Lackey will form a single member LLC?
Right. So we're substituting the company here because this was intended to be a very long-term agreement. So it seemed cumbersome to us to have a whole string of people.
Right.
With the primary contact. So we're simply substituting a company so that the city will have a single entity that it can deal with, with anything that will come up any time on the burial site. That's the only purpose. It'll be a single member LLC, it won't do anything else.
The city will make, at the expense of the company, which will build and construct, up to 50 in-wall and/or below-ground burial spots or spaces. These will be located in the conservatory. Well, in the interior, either in the floor or in the wall, or it could be a combination because the actual design plans, right now, of course, we have conceptual plans, but the actual design, designs for the building itself will show the location. But some of the burial spaces will be located inside the facility and will be either in the wall or floor or maybe even a combination. If you'll go to the rendering that shows the outside. And it's also contemplated that there will be, in some design, burial spaces located in this area, if I'm correct.
At a high level, I think it's important to understand through reviewing this agreement that the only obligation we're really putting on the city is making the space available. And you'll have to look at various places in this agreement to put it all together. But we're taking all the responsibility for putting in crypts in, putting the sites, headstones, everything. This is supposed to not impose costs on the city. The reason it's structured this way, by the way, is all tax-driven.
Yes.
That we simply have to separate this from the conservancy and make this a separate agreement between the Lackey family and the city. That would have tax-related reasons, the deductibility and the terrible contribution construction. So it may seem like a strange structure, but that's the reason we're doing it. And the way this is set up, we try not to impose any obligations on the city other than to make the space available and shift the burdens to the conservatory or to the Lackey's for the other things. The only other thing the city will be doing is the normal type maintenance, ongoing maintenance obligation that would do for a similar city facility.
And thank you. There you have it in a nutshell. We can just move right along. No, just kidding. But seriously, that pretty much is it. If you'll bring the PowerPoint back up, just to give a framework. Of course, overall, governs the construction and maintenance of the burial sites. And the sites, of course, for the Lackey, the extended Lackey families use, and any other persons the family may designate to use a space or spaces. Here's the way this agreement is broken down, the background statement and then the statement of agreement, which includes all of the provisions listed here, and there's some on the next page. As Mr. Bryant has pointed out, the consideration, the city agrees to maintain the gardens, and the gardens is used, of course, because the burial spaces are located in the conservancy, pardon me, conservatory, and of course, in the adjacent part, the patio portion. The conservatory is a part of the gardens, which includes all the other facilities. So that's why the term gardens is used here. Now, the key difference here is typically in our cemeteries, families, individuals purchase the plots. And they actually own the plots, I mean, it's real estate. A deed is drafted, you see those deeds in your other meetings and approve the deeds when the city sells the plots. However, these burial spaces are not being sold or purchased for ownership reasons by Mr. Lackey or by the company. This arrangement is more akin to what we do with our column barion, which holds cremains. The 50 spaces, the right to use, the 50 spaces will occur in the form of a license, and a fee will be paid for that license by the company. The sum will have to be determined, and that will probably, more likely than not, will be based on the prevailing rates for actual burial spaces, for coffins, full bodies, and also the cost for what we do for licensing the niches, niches for the cremains. So it'll have to be some kind of calculation based on that. I don't know whether it will be an averaging or how we'll exactly do that. But there will be a lump sum paid for that license to utilize those spaces. And I'm on page 2 of the burial. As Mr. Bryant has already pointed out, the city will not construct those spaces. Or install any crypts. That will be the responsibility of the company as well as any plaques, headstones, other The company may elect to have the crypts installed under in pursuant to the grant agreement, which more likely not is the way it's going to occur. As the conservatory is being built, the spaces, the crypts will be put in at that time. Again, according to the specific design for this, for the facility. Number 3, I've already touched on that, 3.1, that the city will license and provide to the company the use of the burial spaces for the interment of human remains of the Robert Lackey extended family or any other persons whom the company or appointee designate identifies in writing. And so glad Bob Bryant pointed it out because this will be available to the extended family. There will be a designate who will identify in writing. One of the issues sometimes we run into in our other cemeteries is plots are owned by family and may have been owned for decades, when someone comes along and, "Well, Uncle Joe told me I could use that." Really? Did Uncle Joe tell you that? So that's why, this is not out of line, this is actually in keeping with our cemetery ordinance, which permits and actually encourages families to put in writing who has use of burial spaces in advance. And therefore, we've incorporated that same language in this particular agreement. Again, the city, under 3.2, retains title, full title to the burial spaces and only grants a perpetual license. Any questions about the licensing of the spaces? Paragraph 4 deals with the private use of the gardens. Of course, the family will want opportunities to celebrate special times and occasions with their loved ones who will be interred there. The city is granting to the company the right to have at least six times per calendar year celebrations of family events. And this will, of course, occur at the request of the company. So there, the city and the company will work together to schedule these times because it may impact upon when the conservatory or other parts are actually open to the public. This use will be at no additional cost to the company except for reimbursement of any excess costs. For example, if there were a celebration that occurred perhaps at night and the company desired to have security on, on site for that, then the company would reimburse the city for the provision, say if we sent, had an officer, an off-duty officer out there. Any questions about 4, the private use of the gardens? Number 5, in a sense, relates to that, and access to the gardens, the family and friends and guests will have access to the gardens, including the conservatory for visitation. And these are times outside of the six times delineated in Section 4. Of course, families want to visit, their loved ones. And the city will grant access to the Lackey family and guests at all reasonable times. Section 6, agreement and obligations of the city. This section deals primarily with how these burial spaces and the use relates to our existing cemetery ordinance. Notably, under Section A, 6.1A, the city will pass a resolution designating the area as a cemetery, because, of course, it's not, it's a par. So there will have to be a resolution designating that particular area, those areas of the conservatory as a, as a cemetery. Under B, the city waives Section 7-18A. An individual is limited to purchasing eight contiguous spaces in our other cemeteries. However, as been pointed out, the burial spaces will total up to 50, so the city will have to waive that ordinance in order for this transaction to occur. Under C, Section 7-61B, 61B and C, will allow the conservancy, or the developer, pardon me, the company, to contain 50 in-wall or below-ground spaces. And we're waiving those, there are requirements related to mausoleums, there's a limitation on the number of bodies that can be placed in a mausoleum under our existing cemetery ordinance. This provision, of course, the city would waive that because we're talking about, I think it's 12 maybe, in a mausoleum. And of course, again, we're talking about 50 here. D is important in that the city will waive rights under Article 10 with respect to the burial spaces that would adversely affect them. However, this deals with things, for example, as constructing, like putting in sprinkler systems, that type of infrastructure. Most of that would not pertain to this area, to the conservancy, because of course, the facilities, plumbing, water, all that stuff will be, of course, included in the design. E is important on page 4, that the city will be responsible for maintaining the gardens and the conservatory, including the burial spaces, and in a manner which we maintain our other cemeteries. If the city were to hire an outside company to maintain, to do maintenance, then that company would be required to do the maintenance at a level, the same level that the city is required to do the maintenance.
What this section also does is we don't want to draw explicit connections between the conservancy and this the conservancy and this agreement, again, the tax reason. What this really says is when we get into the conservancy agreement, you'll see that the city is developing a detailed operation and maintenance plan that specifies exactly what it's required to do and what the conservancy is required to do. This gives the city the right to shift some of the maintenance responsibility to the conservancy in that agreement without actually expressly saying it. That's why it's written in general terms, but that's the consequence of this provision.
Any questions about paragraph six?
On 6.1C, it says 50 in-wall or below-ground burial spaces, that means one or the other? Couldn't be both?
As I stated, it could be.
Could be both.
Could be.
Maximum of 50.
Yes, and again, recall that some of them will more than likely than not be under, or in the patio area.
And also, in the case of graveside rides or funerals there, would that be included in the six times per year use, or?
No, no. The standard procedures for burials, the procedures that are contained in our cemetery ordinance will be followed. In other words, proper permits have to be obtained, there are things that have to be done to actually open crypts, and that is done in conjunction, of course, during, usually during normal business hours, well, our own weekends, and of course, in coordination with our cemetery sexton, but the six celebrations or the six special times are outside that.
Okay. You might, and I don't know, I was going to look up real quick, but I recall that there's some provision in our cemetery ordinance that disallows use of the cemeteries after dark.
I think that, yeah, and I'll have to check to make sure, yeah. Because some of the celebrations may be there. We typically don't do burials at night, but you know, that may be a request by the family, and of course, that, I'm glad you pointed that, because that would have to be waived. Any other questions so far? All right, paragraph seven, this lays out the obligations of the company. The company will furnish information on who has the right to use the spaces. Again, so hopefully we won't run into issues with, yes you can use it, no you can't, do you have permission, do you not? Because as you can imagine, that is really difficult in the time of bereavement, to tell a family, "I'm sorry, you can't use it because you don't have permission." Of course, as I pointed out, the company will comply with Article nine, which governs the actual interment of any remains. The company will maintain and repair any damage to the crypts themselves, including plaques, headstones and other monuments, with the exception, of course, if the city damages a crypt through its negligence, by being negligent, then of course, the city would reimburse the company for the cost of repairing any such damage. The numbering's a little off on there, so don't pay that any attention for now. Under section eight, this again is reiterating the fact that the city actually owns the land where the gardens will be constructed, and has the right to grant the company the use of the gardens to put in the burial spaces, and of course, this agreement will be executed by both parties. 8.2, of course, states that the company will have the authority to execute the documents, necessary documents. Section nine deals with term and termination. Now, in the event under 9.2, the term agrees, begins upon execution of the agreement, and it continues unless one of the conditions below applies. If the conservatory has not been constructed by January 1st, 2020, and of course, the burial spaces have not, the licensed burial spaces has not been constructed at that point, then this agreement, meaning the burial agreement, will terminate. And in the event that would occur, the licensing fee that has been paid by the company, the city will reimburse that fee. Under 9.3, the company may terminate the agreement at any time without cause, if the company determines that the burial spaces are no longer the appropriate place to inter the remains of the Robert Lackey family. If that were to occur subsequent to the interment of family members or others, then it would be the responsibility of the company to disintered those remains, and of course, that has to be done in accordance with very, very strict procedures. And there would not be a refund at that point in time of the consideration. Again, that would, if this comes into play, the facilities have been constructed, remains have been interred there, and then if there's a change in plan by the company, the family, then at that point in time, there would be no refund, and the family would be responsible for disinterment. I'd like to point out, of course, under 10.3, the city can't assign its rights and obligations, but the company may assign the agreement to any member of the Robert Lackey extended The agreement, again, is governed by the laws of North Carolina, and of course, this represents the entire agreement, with there being no other agreements outside this document. Any questions about the burial agreement? Now, we're going into what I think we would call the granddaddy of the agreements, the conservancy agreement. It would like to predicate or qualify things by saying that the lion's share of the work is, this agreement has been done by Mr. Bryan, Mr. Lackey, of course, we've been right there having, I can't tell you how many phone calls and conferences and to put this together. One of the, and I think Mr. Lackey has addressed this before in previous presentations, is that is a desire to, again, maintain these facilities in a world-class manner, and in other areas, some parks are actually managed, maintained by what's known as a conservancy. A primary example would be in Atlanta, Atlanta's Piedmont Park. The structure of the conservancy agreement follows those models of those other conservancy Basically, the agreement outlines the city's responsibilities, as well as the conservancy's in developing and managing the waterfront memorial park. A conservancy, the conservancy will be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and will be responsible for the day-to-day management and operations, programming of events, renting out the facilities for private parties, weddings, receptions, things of that nature. Under the background statement, of course, this outlines what has been stated in the other agreements, that this project is going to occur in phases, through an ongoing public-private partnership with the city and the conservancy. Other phases will be funded either by the conservancy or private donors, those private donors would be identified by the conservancy. As we'll see later, the conservancy will consist, will have a board of directors, the initial board will consist of seven members, four of whom will be appointed by Mr. Lackey, three of whom will be appointed by you. Any questions about the background statement? Moving into this statement of agreement, section one of the statement deals with the I'd like to point out just a few. Again, we see the gardens is defined here, including the memorial garden, the conservatory lake house, the canopy walk, the event dock, discreet parking, but it doesn't include, again, the boat dock, boat ramp, fishing dock, parking areas for vehicles and boat trailers, the driveway and entrance enhancements, the existing bike way or bike trail, group picnic shelter and outdoor restroom facilities.
This is a place where we tie to the specific designated site on the master plan, which is attached to this document in Article 6.
The initial facilities is defined, will be defined on the master plan that Mr. Bryan just referenced, and the master plan, of course, is the reference to the actual site plan. The O&amp;M plan will be a operations and maintenance plan that will be developed by the city in conjunction with the conservancy, that will govern the roles and responsibilities of each party for the maintenance of the facility. If you'll move to page three. Private capital donor, I just referred to that, that would be an individual, or could even be a company, that has been tapped by or identified by the conservancy, who will fund and manage construction of facilities in other future phases.
Our expectation, by the way, is that once we move past the first stage and get our 501(c)(3) qualification, that it would be simpler for donors to pass their money through the conservancy, so the city could deal directly with the conservancy on future phases. We put this in solely to give the parties flexibility, if 10 years from now there was some question about the 501(c)(3) status, this gives us an alternative way to get money into other projects. I'd say we don't think this will ever be used, but it's there if the parties should need it in the future.
Questions about any of the terms and definitions? Section two deals with general agreements on the development and management. 2.1, again, outlines the fact that the city will own the gardens, or shall own the gardens and facilities, again, in reference to the conservancy's authority or right to place personal property in the facilities, and to remove such personal property that's not permanently attached. 2.2, the development and operation of the gardens will be done in a good faith effort consistent with the master plan and the agreement and the referenced operations and maintenance On page four, the conservancy will have the authority to engage architects to provide additional detailed engineered drawings, bid documents and other similar documents, which will supplement and become a part of the master plan. Again, this contemplates construction in future phases.
Let me jump in and say one thing that I might, this is sort of a dense document, and I think this comment may be a little helpful in understanding. Our notion was that this is cooperative effort, and we're going to be doing a lot of the day-to-day work, but we were sensitive to the fact that the city needs to maintain ultimate control over a lot of these things, and what you'll see is the city gets that control in three different ways. One, you have three of the seven members on the conservancy's board, so you will be at the table, an active participant in the discussion. The second thing, we rely on master plans to define in a lot of detail what's going on, and those plans have to go through the normal procedures for approval by the city. So you will be on board with the master plan before it's attached and we follow it. And the third thing you'll see as we meet along, is there are all kinds of obligations for consultation, and we have to make reports on a regular basis, we meet with city officials on a regular basis, we meet with you on a regular basis, and we provide reports. So when you pull those three things together in air mind, that's the city's protection in participating in this venture. And we'll get to those of these at a time, because of the way you lay it out in the agreement.
Right.
One thing that, and I don't know if I'm jumping ahead or not, but I'm just confused, 2.2 requires that the city and the conservancy develop, operate, maintain and manage the gardens together in cooperation. And then 2.2 says, "The conservancy shall be responsible for the management of the gardens on a day-to-day basis."
Right.
So what's the distinction there?
The distinction, we're talking about a couple different things. We're talking about facilities management, we're talking about program. When you talk about day-to-day programming, that's really what we think the city is asking the conservancy to handle.
Got you.
If you talk about the facility management, then you're going to have to have the same way to do that that you would do for any other city facility, and that's what's covered by the O&amp;M plan that we'll get to later, which is the operations and maintenance plan. That is a plan that will be developed by the city initially, and while we have rights of approval, the city's really the one that's running that plan, and they will set that plan up the same way they set it up to maintain other facilities, and in a way that your maintenance guys are comfortable with, and so that's the distinction. If we do the day-to-day programming thing, but the city really has more control over facility management.
Any other questions so far? And he's already touched upon that in 2.3, which is the day-to-day management, which will fall under the purview of the conservancy, again, referencing the scheduling, planning, publicizing of events, programs. All of this, of course, will be done in, with the, keeping in mind the protection and preservation of the burial spaces that are there. And of course, any programs and events have to comply with current city ordinances, policy standards or procedures. 2.4, this relates to the rights that the city will have to use of the gardens. The city will be, the conservancy will grant the city the right to use the gardens for city-sponsored events for up to 12 times each calendar year. These events must be organized, hosted and run by the city. There would be no additional cost to the city, except for those costs that are outlined as requirements under the operations and maintenance plan. There's a reference in this paragraph to, about liquor liability insurance, and we'll get to that a little bit later. Of course, we don't, the city itself does not serve and sell alcoholic beverages, but in the future should, your successors or even you decide you want to sell or serve alcohol yourself, then there's a requirement that we would have to have the appropriate liability insurance in place.
Okay, can I ask just maybe a general question in this, it helps me understand that, I really liked your comment before, high-level stuff. If someone wanted to use the facility, a third party, not the Lackey family, not the city?
It's a renting.
They would work through the conservancy?
Yes.
Or a wedding or something like that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then the conservancy would handle that whole?
Yes.
Deal? The scheduling?
Yes.
Any fees?
Yes.
Any of that?
And we're going to get, there's a provision here that relates to the fees that the conservancy will be able to charge, but yes, the city would not be involved in any of that.
Okay.
My understanding is that the reserved city events are more likely to be a function for city employees. for city employees if you want to do a meeting there. I mean, it's not intended to cover you passing a third-party use through.
No. But, for example, if the city wanted to sponsor a concert on the event dock, that type of event, but it would be something hosted, crafted by the city, sponsored by the city.
And cleared through the Conservancy.
Right.
Yeah.
Of course, yeah, it has to be presented and, of course, there's language that references that the Conservancy would not, of course, unreasonably withhold its approval, but of course, the events would have to be in keeping with the programming model that the Conservancy's going to put in place. B, again, references that the company has retained the right to grant to third parties, the right to construct and use the in-wall or underground, below-ground burial spaces. This, again, is the tie, but without being specific for tax reasons, but ties it back to the burial agreement. On page five, the city agrees and acknowledges that the Conservancy will have the right to sell food and alcohol for fundraising events, other public and private events, as well as concessions. The Conservancy will obtain and maintain all the appropriate liquor licenses and permits for serving food. The Conservancy may retain all concession revenues, but the Conservancy also will provide the city with a report, an annual report of all concessions operated, and that report will be due by July 1st of each year. Any questions about that? Just want to make that clear, that that money will go back into the Conservancy. 2.6 is critical in that it lays out the method by which any disagreements will be resolved. I think as Mr. Bryan has always already stated, that there will be meetings, frequent meetings between staff and the Conservancy, primarily the Parks and Recreation Director, Mac, and down in the future, of course, his successor. There's a provision where they will actually have monthly meetings. But in the event there is a disagreement, the following process will be outlined. The President of the Conservancy and the Parks and Recreation Director will meet within 30 days of receiving written notice of the issue and attempt to resolve the issue through conversation and dialogue. Then if the President and the Parks and Recreation Director aren't able to come to a, reach a resolution, the President will then meet, have the opportunity to meet with the city manager within 30 days and attempt, again, to reach a resolution. If the President of the Conservancy and the city manager are unable to resolve the disagreement within 30 days, then the parties will have an opportunity to select a mutually acceptable mediator to mediate the resolution. Or mediate the problem, rather. 2.7, again, we've already referenced that, this refers to the meetings, the ongoing meetings that will occur. And of course, this will relate to just all matters in the gardens, the operation, maintenance, any construction, management. Because this is a new venture, I mean, this is our first time venturing into having a Conservancy for our park property. So it's going to be an ongoing relationship. 2.9 deals with the naming rights. The Conservancy will have naming, facility naming rights that would apply to structures and, of course, the property of the land. And the naming rights will have to be approved per council's facility naming rights and policy and procedure.
I think it's important to stop and point out there that the naming rights are a critical element to us, so our expectation is that any issues about the naming rights would be dealt with simultaneously with the approval of this agreement. But how we sign this agreement, we would want the city council to be on board with the naming rights.
Any questions about section two? Section three deals with the creation and the governance of the Conservancy. The Conservancy, of course, will be developed through articles and bylaws, drafts of those are being worked on, those will be attached as Exhibits D and E. As has already been pointed out, the Board of Directors will consist of, initially of seven members, with three members being appointed by you and four members, of course, being appointed through Mr. Lackey. The Board has the opportunity and can expand, I think, up to 15, 15 members, and the city would have, would be entitled to appoint up to half of the new members should the Board expand. Record requirements are similar for any other nonprofit organization. The city would have the opportunity and the right to inspect, copy and audit records and accounts at all reasonable times, and the Conservancy will provide an annual financial report to our Chief Finance Officer. Questions there? Section four, the construction of the facility, this is a reference to what has already been covered in the grant construction easement, that the construction will occur in several phases, and again, referencing in Phase One in particular, what will be included, the structures, the conservatory, the memorial garden, lake house, tree canopy, event dock and discreet parking. As Mr. Bryan has pointed out, this, of course, again, involves ongoing dialogue and conversations, particularly in relationship to future phases, future construction. Bud, do you want to address the pre-approved?
Anything that's the same level of protection for?
Each of those.
Being allowed to like to go out and do new facilities?
No.
We would have the same procedures we're following here, which is the one that went through the city, get the city approvals, get approval of the master site plan. I mean, if we get down the road where we agree that it's a good idea to have a complimentary facility, we still have to jump through all the hoops to get the city protection about exactly how it's built.
And as he has pointed out, future construction would, there would be additional grant construction agreements to cover those particular facilities. So I think it's important to point out that the grant construction agreement here, again, is only for the first phase and would not, would not be utilized for future construction of future phases.
But even if in the future, I mean, let's say we're 10 years down the road and the Conservancy is the one that's actually handling the construction, the Conservancy will still execute this grant agreement.
Right.
Because that's the document that gives lawyer protections during the construction phase. So this is a form agreement, we can use it for the first level of construction, first phase, but it's there for additional phases in the future.
4.2 deals with the construction of a project. The Conservancy will, part of its, what it will be doing will be fundraising. Donations to cover anticipated costs of constructing facilities for agreed-upon projects. And again, as we just referenced, the Conservancy would be the body that would enter into a grant agreement with the city for the construction of any future facilities. B, I think Bob Bryan has referenced this already, this, again, allows private donors to make direct contributions to the city in the event the Conservancy has not obtained its 501(c)(3) status at that particular time. Because we wouldn't want to, and the Conservancy wouldn't want to deny someone an opportunity to make a contribution and receive, of course, a tax exemption for that. The Conservancy would not want a person or a corporation to be thwarted because it hasn't obtained its 501(c)(3) status yet. Because you could have someone right out the gate who wants to join in. So this provision permits that to occur where that flows through to the city, so it can be a tax-deductible donation. Now, should there be a private capital donor other than Mr. Lackey or a member of his immediate family, I'm dealing, I mean, in 4.2B, the city may elect not to proceed with that particular project if the city is not willing to deal directly with that private capital donor. However, if the city does proceed with the project and the city and the private capital donor enter into a grant construction agreement, again, similar to this one, the Conservancy would have the authority and right to oversee and supervise the performance of the private capital donor. To ensure.
But 10 years to put you in the exact same position that you would have been in if the Conservancy had been able to do it itself. Technically and structurally, the money might have to come from a third party, but we would want the Conservancy to view itself as still being responsible, supervise and manage everything in the same way that it would if it would definitely want to improve it. And we're not trying to dump any duties on the city here.
4.3, again, references the initial facilities in Phase One. And as already been stated, the Conservancy may propose additional complimentary facilities, again, based on the funds that is raised, funds from private donors and other funds that the Conservancy has raised. Again, the city in 4.5 has the right to oversee the work performed with respect to the construction in accordance to all applicable laws, but the city is not obligated. The Conservancy, again, as Mr. Bryan has aptly pointed out, will bear that responsibility for having oversight. Operation of the adjacent park. Now, the areas that are outside of Phase One, the boat dock, the ramp, the fishing dock, the parking areas, the driveway, those areas are the responsibility of the city. The city will manage those areas as well as the other areas of the park. Okay, of course, you know, the existing bike trail, the parking, restroom facilities. I'm sorry if I blinded somebody, I think I was over here.
I don't know if this has to do with it or not, I just thought about this, any utilities associated with this, how does, how does that transpire?
That's going to be covered in the operation and maintenance plans, are you referring to who actually pays for the utilities?
Yes.
That's going to be delineated in the operation and maintenance plan, which will be drafted up by the city and, of course, conjunction with the Conservancy.
So, Arnita, with regard to anything that, on the, on the master site plan, which we'll see, and, that defines the gardens?
Yes.
Okay. Anything outside of that is, like boat dock, that's shown on that, is there anything in the documents that would obligate the city to construct those facilities in accordance with the site plan, the master site plan? So in other words, the parking area, the boat dock?
The very general obligations of cooperation and obligations on the city to manage this in ways that are consistent with the use of the gardens. There's no affirmative obligation, there's no monetary obligation on the city to do additional construction.
Yeah, 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 I mean, I guess I was, yeah, so the boat dock that shows there that that might be, that may or may not be constructed by the city at some point in the future.
The boat dock is not on, it's not in?
Yeah, it's not in the part of?
Oh, it's not even in the concept, okay.
Yeah, it's changed to?
Changed to a kayak launch?
Kayak launch or canoe launch, something like that?
Yeah. But it is contemplated, I think, in all fairness, it's contemplated that we will do those, the parking and all those ancillary pieces, although it's not explicit in the document that requires us to do it.
Okay, so.
But in keeping that we would do it in kind of the flavor of the whole project, and we'd keep that in mind. A reference again to the existing facilities, one, something that was, of course, I think, very important to the city, that the existing facilities, that those remain, and again, they are either renovated, the current ones are renovated, or they are demolished and new ones are constructed. And again, that would fall under the purview of the Conservancy or the developer, Mr. Lackey, as to whether it's, they're removed or whether they are actually renovated. If you'll go back to the map, please. Yeah, I meant to say acknowledge my, our new IT person. I couldn't quite figure out how I could do it by myself, and this is not on PowerPoint, so I can't use another clicker on this one. Yes, if you'll go back to?
I actually said that wrong, the boat dock stays, it's the ramp goes away and becomes a kayak launch, but the boat dock, the boat dock out there now stays.
I know this is probably a little bit difficult to see, but here in sort of the dark blue, purple, this is the expansion area and the buffer. Of course, this is pretty much all now, most of this is undeveloped. But the Conservancy, and I think Mr. Lackey desired to have a buffer between that and any existing development that the city may do in what's called the undesignated area. Of course, there's a realization that the riverwalk will take some portion of this. So the expansion area was crafted with that in mind, but I can't remember, what is it, about eight acres, the expansion buffer area? I can't see.
It says up there on the?
What does it say? Your eyes are much younger than mine. Okay, I trust you, if you say that's what it says, I don't care.
What, what entails a buffer area?
What entails?
Yeah, what is it? Is it, is it plantings, hedges, walls?
Right now it's undeveloped, I mean, it's just raw property with whatever's out there.
We initially contemplated a much larger buffer and expansion area.
It was here, almost here, was it here?
I was not aware of the riverwalk project, and what we had agreed to do is cut this back, those much smaller areas, so that we gave the city the flexibility it needed for the riverwalk. The concept here is, as I said, called the buffer and expansion area, it's really supposed to be reserved for future expansion, to give us some cushion in case we come up with complimentary facilities, and to also have a relatively undeveloped area that can help maintain sort of the peace and quiet and serene area that we want the Conservancy to have. Once we get into the undesignedated area, which is the big area here, it's a very unstructured thing. The notion is that the city's got to decide first what it wants to do with the riverwalk. And we both want these two projects to tie together, and once the city decides what it wants to do and what space it wants to use, it's possible that there could be additional areas that we more logically tie into what we're doing, but that's no obligation on the city. We just really set up sort of a cooperative relationship where we look at that as we go along and try to come up with the best result for the city. So the city has full discretion about what it does in this ground area, this undesignedated area, so that it can do what it needs to do with the riverwalk.
In future, whatever they want to do with that area.
Pardon? What the city wants to do? Yes.
We think we're pretty cool for the two to tie together.
Okay.
And so we want to encourage that.
I mean, and this is great stuff. Y'all done a lot of great work. But like, if you think about the riverwalk and this being a diamond, if you will, a jewel of an anchor at the end of the riverwalk, the conservancy. And then you think about, you know, 10 years down the road and people wanting to access and use the riverwalk. I mean, has there been given thought to, well, how will people park and access the riverwalk? I mean, the conservancy land would not necessarily be available for that.
I mean, there will be some parking, but it's going to be limited.
It'll be limited, yeah. I mean, so I guess, I guess sort of the question out there, which obviously maybe doesn't get answered today, is, you know, what is that, what does that boundary between the gardens and the conservatory and the potential riverwalk, what that might, that look like so that we can make sure that the public's able to access the riverwalk, get on conservatory property, or conservancy property, excuse me? Because my fear would be that there would be, if with connection, there would be a big demand down at the, within the conservancy for parking to access the riverwalk. Does that make sense?
Sure. And I meant to say, and I apologize for missing saying that.
I didn't answer that now.
That staff, well, staff are here, of course, Matt, Bryan, and Chuck are here. And I also forgot, I'm so sorry, I forgot to introduce our consultant, who's also been working closely with us, David Carter. David is, has his own consulting firm, but he spent, what, 30-plus years with Wake County, dealing with parks, and has had experience with conservancies, and so he's provided invaluable advice and helped us with document review. And I'm going to apologize for not introducing you. Like I said, this is like summer camp. We've been on an extended summer camp. I'm serious. We've been together a long time, all this. But it's good, it's all good. So Matt may want to address some things, some discussion on the parking.
Hey, Roger, this is a counsel, Mr. Bryan. Ms. Led, just, we are staff, we are looking at the parking in relationship to the project here, but also with the riverwalk, too. If you go back, one thing we're doing to help with the park, you go back to, let me take you back to our project with Greater Hickory Tennis Association and improvements that we're going to do on the tennis complex at Hickory City Park. One of the things we're looking about there is expanding the existing parking over and above, when we were before use several months ago on that. After that, we've gone back and looking, expanding that parking over and above what we originally planned to help with the parking here, once this project is finished, but also with, also along with the riverwalk. In the preliminary discussions we've had on the riverwalk and with that subcommittee, they've had those same discussions about parking and connection with the Lackey project here, along with the riverwalk. So that's one thing we're looking at, subcommittee, and we'll be looking at about, you know, creating parking where you can also access the riverwalk, but also here. Once this is completed, if there's a major event there, one of the things from an, and that'll be dealt with in operations and maintenance plan, there'll have to be some shuttles done. You know, they'll have to be using existing city parking, the expanding the Hickory City Park, J.C. Park, we're looking down at J.C. Park, if you go down to where the ball field, if you go down where the ball field parking is, that's city parking, somehow using that as parking connection with the riverwalk. So we're addressing all that with this and also in the riverwalk. So that answers your question.
And that also ties into the new parking lot that we just discussed at our last meeting.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that would be. So, like you said, the big thing from operations logistics is having enough parking. We knew we're not going to be able to have enough parking on site to handle if there's a big event at the lake house or the conservatory. So that's just where it gets into off-site shuttle parking, and that will be handled under the operations and maintenance plan.
And conceivably, that shuttle could be through the riverwalk, it wouldn't have to go onto the roadway.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you could use electric vehicles or whatever.
Yes, sir, and that's where, Ms. Bryan was talking about, you know, this project, riverwalk, all tie in, all go in.
Moving on to page nine. Section 6 deals with the rights and obligations of the conservancy to do fundraising, and I think we've stated this a number of times already, that the conservancy will be doing fundraising through events, capital campaigns, sponsored facilities and activities to raise funds for not only construction purposes, but to cover the cost of operating the facilities. Now, the city will have the discretion to determine whether it wants to participate in funding the construction, and this has already been referenced. But the main goal for these partnerships is that they will be funded through either the conservancy or a private donor. With the city, of course, having the discretion to determine if it will contribute funds. Okay, 6.4, I think there was a question before or a comment about fees. 6.4 deals with that, that the conservancy will develop a schedule of fees and charges for use of the gardens that will be done on an annual basis. The conservancy, of course, will present the proposed fee schedule to council by May 1st of each year. The conservancy will have the discretion to set the fees and charges, but of course, council will have the opportunity to approve those, the fee schedule. And this, of course, will be fees for use of facility, for example, renting facilities for weddings, receptions, other events, that type of thing. Any questions about the fundraising?
Right now, the city charges fees for use of other parks and structures that we own in the city, but those would be in.
The question was about.
I just wondered if it's going to fit in the same framework of what other fees the city charges for use of facilities, parks.
These fees, I would anticipate, we've not got to that form of city, but I would anticipate that these fees would be at a higher, at a higher level, because mainly the fees that the city charges right now are just for picnic shelters mainly, and then, you know, winter activity center, community rooms type of things. But this is on a little bit, much broader scale than what the city does right now. So though, I would anticipate those fees being significantly different, just due to a smaller scale than what the city, what we're currently renting, reserving. Does that answer your question?
There's some why, I mean, until it's nailed down.
But like I said, that'll all be played out in operation, where I go back, all goes back to the operations and maintenance plan, all that'll be handled through that.
Section 7 deals with maintenance and support. And 7.1, again, delineates the responsibilities of the conservancy, again, basically the day-to-day things, the garden, facility, making sure the facility is cleaned, those type of things, the event planning, the programming, all that falls under the purview of the conservancy. But the city in 7.2 is responsible for maintenance of the remainder of the park, also for structures remediation, major structural maintenance of the facilities, for example, the roof, the HVAC. Cleaning and landscaping and gardening the portions of the park that fall outside of the gardens, maintaining the road and other pedestrian and vehicle access, providing collection of garbage and litter control, and provision of security. As has already been stated, these obligations, the obligations of both parties are going to be set out in greater detail in operations and maintenance plan, which, of course, will be presented as a part of this document at an appropriate time for your approval. 7.3 references the operation and maintenance plan that we've discussed or talked about a number of times this morning. And the plan will be drafted by the city, but of course, will have input in the approval 7.4 is nothing different, that the city, of course, will maintain property insurance on the completed facilities, just as we have on all of our other properties that we own. Questions about the operation and maintenance plan, or the maintenance of the gardens area and the adjacent park area? Section 8 deals with representations, basically that we, again, own the property and that we have the right to develop the park in the manner laid out in these documents. The conservancy, of course, warns that it will be a not-for-profit corporation and will apply for tax status, and that it has, will have the authority to execute any appropriate agreements and documents. Questions there? Section 9, allocation of liability. And they're not with us today, but we work very closely with Broome Insurance, our agent, and of course, they work very closely with our carrier, our current carriers, Travelers. So under 9.1, the insurance that will be required by the conservancy, these particular policies and limits, again, are, were done in conjunction with and discussion with our agent and carrier, and also Mr. Bryan in consultation with their insurance person. The policies as listed, general liability, liquor liability, the umbrella policy will be, the requirement is $5 million, DNO, employment practices, workers' comp, automobile liability, and the floater policy to cover the personal property. The city, of course, will be covered as an additional insured under the general liability and liquor liability insurance policies. The conservancy will furnish certificates of insurance to the city, showing the city as a listed additional insured. And of course, the city would be notified by the carrier within 30 days in the event that the policies change or there's a cancellation. 9.2 deals with the required insurance that the city must maintain. And this, of course, follows along what we have. These facilities will be added to our policies and will be covered at the appropriate levels recommended by our carrier.
Are you talking about for casualty?
Uh, yeah.
Civil care casualties?
Yeah, all of the current policies, the policies that we have regarding our city-owned properties, structures, facilities, they will be the same. We will add these structures to that. And of course, if limits need to be adjusted or changed accordingly, that will be done. But the idea, of course, is for the limits to mirror what's here. 9.3, the conservancy and the city, these A and B are mirror indemnification provisions that each party basically will defend, identify, and hold harmless the other party in the event of the, a party's negligence for damage, bodily damage, injuries. And of course, this is a standard, these are standard provisions contained in pretty much any agreement. Any questions about indemnification? Section 10, term and termination. The term again begins upon execution of the agreement, and again, will continue until termination in accordance with one of the provisions below. 10.2 deals with termination for cause, and permits either party to terminate for cause. That is, if a party believes the other party has breached a material term of the agreement, then the, there would be an opportunity, if it cannot be resolved through the procedures that were identified in the earlier sections of this agreement, then a party would have an opportunity to terminate for cause. But, of course, the goal would be for the parties to resolve any kind of disputes or disagreements, using the procedures outlined in this agreement before termination. If the matter cannot be resolved, of course, either party has the opportunity to pursue legal remedies through the courts. 10.3 is important. If the gardens have not been constructed, and the gardens, again, referring to Phase 1 only, by January 1st, 2020, either party may terminate the agreement. Questions about termination? Under Section 11, dealing with miscellaneous procedures, provisions, pardon me, again, these are standard provisions contained pretty much in most committee documents. Now, I know that's a lot to digest, but if you have any, well, one question may be this. You do have a document in front of you. This is a chronology that has been prepared by Mr. Bryan, Mr. Lackey, chronology of events for the Waterfront Memorial Park, to give you some idea of what our next steps will be. Of course, at this time, we will be moving forward with the development of the site plan, development and drafting of the exhibits that will be attached to the various agreements. The conservancy is being created and formed, and you will be asked at a point, hopefully in the very near future, to think about and identify persons whom you would like to appoint to the board.
Will the bylaws of the conservancy address the terms of the city's appointees to that board?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So the terms of appointment.
I haven't looked at it in a while. I don't think there's any reason you can't reappoint it, but we left it pretty flexible as behind the handle.
Right.
If you simply have the form of line completely out of the set.
And should it expand up to half? Of course, that'll be monitored very carefully as this, as the conservancy, in the sense of other bodies, it being a public body, it won't be. So that will be monitored very closely as to the number of members appointed by the city.
The case I'm looking to stand from is that we will relatively soon get to the point where we will need to be executing this agreement, when we're going to have the site grant up, and in order for the conservancy to execute the agreement, it has to be set up and have your approval. So that's why we're going to need relatively quickly to have the city adverse to the board so that we can actually have a meeting by the time comes to get this approved.
So what is the conservancy's preference? That the members be selected by the city that would serve until such time as they would no longer serve by, you know, death, or they move out of the area, or?
Uh, yeah, are there terms, like?
Yeah.
Yeah, are there terms, like three-year terms?
As we begin to ponder...
Like we do our regular...
We left that pretty flexible, but it doesn't...
Okay.
Have we provided documents to, you know, what the bylaws are? It's not, doesn't really bother us how the city wants to make its appointments. So if you don't like the way it is, or you can tell us how you want to do it, we'll simply modify the bylaws before they're done.
My interest would be to do it as you guys would like, you know, as you think it would be most helpful, but because it would seem to me that some, having some length of time on the Conservancy board would be beneficial to the Conservancy. You know, having, you know, as opposed to one or two years.
You probably wouldn't want them all rotating off at the same time, continuity.
Nor would you want someone in there for 50 years.
We may even get a hold of our media, but they hurt the record.
Okay, that's good.
We don't have, we don't, we don't have any appointments for life at this point, right?
No.
Except the plan.
Fred Holler at the Vireal.
Fred's going to outlive us all. Any final questions? And thank you for your patience. Again, I know this is a lot to cover, and we've had a lot of time to be fairly intimate with these documents as far as our knowledge and review. You've had a short period of time, but you will see these again.
I would like to applaud all the parties in this, because it's just a momentous information, and I'm geared to be applauded, and I look forward to a great relationship, so I'm excited.
Wonderful, wonderful project. We're just so delighted that you're doing, especially in my ward. I'm delighted.
We specifically said it has to be in David Zaggeroli's ward.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Boy, they have good taste.
We did, yeah. It's for you, all for you.
Thank you.
Well, I think I speak for the councilwoman. I appreciate the way that you seem to have been over backwards to accommodate the city's interests. Thank you.
And I know Cole's been sitting back there just dying to say something.
All right, Cole, the intern.
Yeah, Cole, what's your perspective on that?
Thank you all for participating, and working with us, and the relationships are great thus far, and I'm happy to have you there with the board.
I had to do that.
Yeah.
Cole sitting back there, counting how many years it's going to be before he has this seat right here. Where do we go from?
Mr. Barry? I introduced David Carter. I'd like to give him just an opportunity, just to speak a little bit, since he's had experience with this, this helps. We probably should have had him at the beginning to help give us a framework for this. So I'd like to call in just to come up and make some comments.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. I need to ask me if I wanted to say a word. I'm a professor at NC State as well. I could talk for hours on end without a note, so I promise you I will not. But I wanted to share your enthusiasm as well, because I've worked on a lot of projects in my life, and I've worked on public-private partnerships for a long time. And I got to tell you that you are in for something special. I've worked up and down the East Coast, I've worked through the Midwest on projects like this, and I can tell you, I don't know of a single project that is as bold and as visionary and as exciting as what this is going to be. I've seen small pockets here and there, little projects, but nothing of the magnitude of what this is going to be. And I think it's really going to be an exciting project and really put something special that nobody else, I know in the state of North Carolina it's not going to have. And when you combine that with the Riverwalk and some of the other projects that I know that the city's working on, I'm excited for you guys, I really am, and I'm excited for the citizens of this community. And I echo your comments, Mr. Mayor. This has been an amazingly easy project. I've worked with a lot of other organizations that it has not been as easy. And it's been a lot of headbutting, and this has been a very easy process of going through, and I compliment everybody. Wonderful design, really excited to see that. And so you're on to something. It is, the documents are excellent, they've been well crafted by all the attorneys and a lot of folks involved with that, and there is a lot of detail to it, and there's a reason for that. Because one of the things that I have learned is, as you know, the devil's in the detail. And having that open communication and having those meetings up front is really what's going to make this project absolutely stellar. And I promise you that five to seven years from now, people are going to be coming to you from around the United States and say, "How did you do that?" Thank you all.
I just have one other quick comment not related to this. Have been getting texts this morning from Scott Millar, and just need to know about y'all's availability for a potential meeting Thursday or Friday this week on economic development. I'm sorry for working y'all so hard, but it's all good stuff. Is anybody out of town Thursday or Friday this week?
I've got a few more friends.
Okay. Are you out of town Thursday and Friday, or just Friday?
No, just Friday. And I'll be back by probably 3:00.
Okay.
I'm out of town Thursday and Friday.
Okay.
I'm here Thursday.
You're here both?
No, just Thursday.
Just Thursday, okay.
I'm here both.
Okay.
I think I'll be okay.
You'll be okay?
Both, uh...
Mary?
I'm here.
You're okay?
Both days.
Are you okay? Okay, great. Thank you all. I'll let you know if that pans out.
Motion by Leo, second by Patton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you Lackey's again.
Yes.